We would like to open today's meeting for the Forest Hills School District on Wednesday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Before we start, I'd like to make a comment. I would like to remind our audience that this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education to conduct business. It's not a public meeting. While I do appreciate everyone here and your interests in the proceedings today, there should be no audience participation during the meeting, and I ask that everyone respect the formality of the meeting and refrain from clapping, cheering, or other destructive noises. Our new board members have spent an enormous amount of time in trainings and countless meetings understanding our policies and procedures. We take these responsibilities very seriously. It is acceptable and desirable to have difference of opinions, and I value the different perspectives of all board members. I believe it will be a benefit to our district to have discussions about our agenda items so that we as a board will be able to make decisions that will benefit all the students in our district. As it should be, and there are many factors that go into making decisions, as difficult as some are, I hope that the district parents and community will understand. We are also very aware that social media has played an increasing role in communications with our stakeholders. While content can represent personal viewpoints, it is expected that any person posting about the Forest Hills School District is factually correct, not manufactured rumors that create fear, incite violence, or harass or intentionally hurt people. Be very careful of what you read, follow, and believe, as there is a great chance it may not be the whole truth. The Forest Hills School District does not condone violence, harassment, or misconduct against any person at any time. The Board will be focused on duties as elected officials and wish to unite our community with dignity and respect for everyone. Call to order, Ms. Cropper?
Mr. Bibb?
Here.
Mrs. Jonas?
Here.
Dr. Resmussen?
Here.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Stewart is absent this evening?
Pledge of allegiance, please everybody rise. One moment while we fix the technology issue here. It'll be up on the screen. We have the front door that everybody, most of everybody came in tonight. We have an exit door that's between those two panels back there, and then there's another one behind us. Item three point one, motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Yes.
We have quite a few minutes to approve tonight. We have approval of minutes of the special meeting on April sixth, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April twentieth, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on April twenty-seventh, and approval of the minutes of Teaching and Learning Committee on April twenty-eighth. May I have a motion to approve items four point one through four point four as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve items four point one through four point four as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Yes.
Five point one, correspondence, Board of Education, Treasurer and Superintendent.
I have one correspondence that's lengthy, but it is from the Alliance for High Quality Education in the state of Ohio, and it is a reminder that the Alliance would like for the Forest Hills School District to once again participate as an affiliate district with that organization. I think later today, well, I know that later this evening in Mrs. Cropper's five-year forecast, there will be some discussion about the Alliance in relation to the Fair School Funding Plan, and so the Alliance is a big contributor to supporting that movement, and it has brought additional resources to our district. So once again, our affiliation with the Alliance for High Quality Education, in my opinion, is a good affiliation. This letter again is requesting that we join again with the other seventy-four member schools at this particular point in time, and this will be on the Board's June agenda. There is no motion or action on this this evening, it's just a letter of invitation to that organization. Thank you.
I received some correspondence as well. Actually, the entire Board received quite a bit of correspondence over the last few weeks, but I want to share some good news. I was informed that one of our students at Turpin High School has been asked to go to Washington, D.C. tomorrow, and they will be presenting testimony in front of a Congressional Subcommittee on Civil Rights and Civil Liberties at a hearing entitled Free Speech Under Attack, Curriculum Sabotage, and Classroom Censorship. And wow. So for time's sake, you know, I do just want to acknowledge everyone in the room and the hundreds, now hundreds, that have sent emails voicing their opinions and positions. But most importantly, I want to take a moment to acknowledge our incredible students. I know that this has been a frustrating few weeks, but I have watched you all organize and speak with so much poise, maturity, and kindness, and you are the examples that we should follow, all of y'all. This is a time when many of you should be planning for graduation and enjoying the last few weeks together before you go off into the world, but instead you've mobilized and inspired so many in this community and across the country. You deserve to be seen, acknowledged, and heard, so I want to take a moment to thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my cold little heart for inspiring me and so many, so thank you.
Five point two, the procedures for public commentary. The Board is committed to conducting its meetings in a productive and efficient manner to assure that meeting is completed in a reasonable amount of time, while also recognizing the importance of fair and adequate opportunity for public input. In order to conduct an orderly and fair representation, the Board will provide a periodic for public participation per policy PO zero one six nine point one at every regular board meeting. Public participation will be a total of thirty minutes. Each speaker will have one minute this evening to speak because we have so many, we have quite a few guests speaking this evening. The Board does not discriminate based on individual content of the speech or viewpoint of the speaker. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, the time limit may be adjusted. We'll move to six point O, accommodations and recognitions, Kyle Fender.
Appreciate everybody being here, and for those of you that watched the board meeting or were here a couple of months ago, you heard me commend Saron Tofara for many other accolades, and I made a teaser about a major scholarship that she was up for, the Jack Cook Foundation Scholarship. Jack Kent Cooke Foundation Scholarship that she was up for, which is a scholarship awarded for up to fifty-five thousand dollars annually, and I'm here not only to share with you that Saron has earned that accomplishment, but we also found out of another significant accomplishment for Saron in the Scholarship Department, and that is the Ron Brown Scholar Program of which she will be a recipient, which is a forty thousand dollar scholarship. I'm a father myself, not quite of a kid, ready to go to college, but we've started looking at the cost of college, so I am sure that fifty-five thousand dollars annually and forty thousand dollars will help that for Saron. Anecdotally, I would just like to share that Saron is one of the most impressive young adults that I have had the privilege of working with in my career in education, and I could not think of a better person to be commending. As a reminder, for those of you that were here and for those of you that weren't, the Jack Kent Cooke Foundation announced one hundred graduating seniors to receive this award across the country, of which Saron is one. I mentioned the fifty-five thousand dollar, up to fifty-five thousand dollar annual cost to cover, and when you consider that Saron is going to Yale in the Ivy League, that money will be put to great use. This scholarship program seeks to help high-achieving students with financial need to earn a college degree, responding to the rising tuition costs and economic challenges faced by families across the country. The foundation increased the maximum amount of the scholarship to be awarded to keep pace with college costs. In addition to substantial financial support, scholars will also receive ongoing academic coaching, advising, graduate school and career advising, access to a network of over twenty-eight hundred active Cooke Scholars and alumni. Scholars will also receive opportunities for internships, study abroad opportunities, and access to graduate school funding. That was the first of the major scholarships Saron is being commended for this evening. The second is the Ron Brown Scholar Program. This year's winners were selected from amongst four thousand applicants, and fifty were This scholarship program was founded in nineteen ninety-six and is now celebrating over twenty-five years. It was named in memory of the first African-American Secretary of Commerce, and the program aims to advance higher education and improve the lives of service-minded and intellectually-gifted African-American students, and to accelerate the progress of impactful leadership and opportunities. Impactful leader, those are great words to describe Saron, so I could spend the rest of the night talking about my admiration for this young lady, but instead- but instead of that, I will respect your all's time and suggest that Superintendent, go ahead.
Mr. Fender, if I may.
Yes, you may.
I know Saron. She is a member of the Superintendent's Forum and has attended meetings. The leadership is definitely a quality. She is a dynamic young lady, and one that I have had the pleasure of getting to know more personally. So, I want to thank you for your help on that committee and for the leadership that you provided there. And I have a son named Joseph, and if there is any money left... He's off to college next year, so, anyway. No, I wish you the best, and what a fine example you are for all of us, how hard work, dedication, and commitment pays off. You're a great leader, and I look so, I'm so excited about your future. So, congratulations to you.
Before I make the recommendation for a motion, I would like to share that Saron is a product of Forest Hills, having come through Air Elementary and then Nagel Middle School and then Anderson High School. So, as much as I personally would love to take credit for helping Saron get here, this has been a real team effort, and Saron is an amazing, amazing person. So, with that, I would ask the Superintendent to recommend to the board to approve a special commendation of Saron's achievement and a certificate be presented to her.
I'll make a motion to condemn her, Mrs., sorry, sorry, commend, I'm sorry, her achievements. Congratulations and good luck. That's really, you did hard work, that's awesome.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Yes. Congratulations. Congratulations. 7.1, the Superintendent update.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausfeld. I have two com, items to speak about tonight. We've had a pretty successful year when you talk about what has happened in the school district regarding wellness. And one of the things that our current board was adamant about upon entering their roles was to update the district's website, providing better opportunities for individuals to be able to locate, to learn, and to be able to access materials regarding this subject matter. So, the first thing I want to show is we have an update of our website. For those of you who have interest, and I'm certain that we all do, what you'll find is that we have two links now, second slide, please. Two links on the website that are prominently displayed on the front of the website, on the first page. And so, if you go to the Resource Center, you will be able to see wellness right up there at the top. I'll explain a little bit about that. And if you go to departments in the school district, you will also find a wellness icon down there at the bottom. So, it's very easy to find when you get to the website. I want to thank Josh Bazan and all of the individual, Josh is our Communication Coordinator, and all the individuals that have helped him to be able to get to this point. It takes a while to update a website, because there are so many things you need to go through. For those of you who work in that world, I think you know what I'm talking about, and making sure that there's access and ease to that access is really important, especially on a topic that has this level of importance. So, there are, if you go to the next slide, please, there are four categories. The district has a multidisciplinary team dedicated to provide research-based, best-practice ways to meet the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students. And so, listed there in the center is the team of individuals throughout our district that is part of the wellness team that has had also their thumbprint, if you will, on the design of our website, and ensuring that the materials that are there are the ones that are aligned with our district's strategic vision, and that we are comprehensive, ensuring that all of the information is available for folks. So, you see that up there. Mental health is one of the primary of four areas that we are making sure that is listed prominently on our website. And mental health is a dedicated page to mental health resources and programs organized by the Forest Hills School District. If you look to the left, it's kind of tough to see up there, but the resources are available for Forest Hills School District. There is a list of more than 90 resources. If you press on that link, there will be 90 resources available for individuals of the affiliates and the organizations that work with us to assist our students, assist our parents and our families, and are an important part of our community network to help our school system, more specifically to help students in our school system. You see other organizations that are with us, like Mindpeace. The National Suicide Prevention Lifeline is on there. You see on the bottom right side, we had a community presentation, and we will continue to put presentations from our community and organizations that are working with us up prominently displayed there. And we'll try to keep those as up to, well, we will keep those up to date. As new sessions are coming up, we will update our website so that the mental health portion and all of the resources associated with that are available for our students and for our parents. The second high priority is school counselors. And you can see up there that this page details the school counseling supports that we have in place, our philosophy and beliefs, along with contact information for each school counselor. Our counselors are, we are following the American School Counselor Association's standards, and every counselor in our school system that is providing counseling services for our students is licensed by the Ohio Department of Education. So, all of our counselors are licensed, and we're following the standards provided by the state of Ohio Department of Education. And there are supports that counselors give. I don't think that everybody knows the many things that counselors are doing. And there are preventative programs that counselors are working with students on. There are classroom guidance opportunities for counselors to work with teachers to provide lesson planning and to provide other information to bolster what's taking place in the classroom related to guidance. Counselors run small groups where they're working with students who have similar concepts or similar things that they would like to talk about. And in those sessions, we offer kids opportunity to have peer support, and the counselors help us with that. We have community outreach programs, and there are many community outreach programs in our schools. We are blessed to have as many people working with our schools as we do, and the many things that they provide for our students and our counselors, and we coordinate with those organizations. We have individual support, which I'm certain you are all familiar with, where we have individual moments with children, and we work with them to better understand their needs, and then to work with them, their parents, and our organizations, and all the folks who can assist for individual needs of students. And so, that's part of the work. Parent consultation. There are often times when parents have questions, concerns, they need assistance with research, with, with what's the best agency maybe to contact, or the best person to contact, or what are some pointers that you can give me to maybe help my son or my daughter in this time period where they're experiencing some difficulty, whether it be social, emotional, academic, whatever that might be. And so, we do have parent consultation. And then we do, as I spoke about a few minutes ago, we have teacher collaboration. And if you are a parent of an IEP student, you know that counselors, psychologists, therapists, they're all involved in those conversations with parents about, and children, and their children, about the best ways that we can meet the needs of those children. And working together as teams is the best way to do that. And so, we encourage that type of collaboration, and it, it is essential that our parents are part of that, and we want them to be a part of that on the very first day that we identify, or a student identifies, a topic or a need that they have. The next one is our school-based supports. And this page, as you can see, it provides context, information, and links to various departments, programs, and organizations that work with students in a school setting. So, we want students to feel safe. We want them to feel secure, respected, and supported in their learning environment. So, again, we have school psychologists. They also are licensed, and we follow the standards set by the Ohio Department of Education. We have our PBIS model, which is our Positive Behavior Interventions and Support Model. We are one of only 17 schools in the state of Ohio to have PBIS awards in every single building that we have. I think what's also important is there are not as many schools in the state of Ohio as you might think that have nine independent buildings. And so, we have nine buildings that have been recognized for our positive behavior work that we're doing. And this is empowering students to display appropriate behavior so they can be contributing successfully and be successful members of their communities. Along the same line, in our school-based supports, we have Child Focus that works with us, and that's a mental health counseling agency that works with us to help our students and help build capacity among our staff to be able to assist our students. We have Hope Squads that we've all heard about, where there's peer-to-peer orientations and peer-to-peer training, or training for peers to be able to assist. We've talked about QPR in here before, responding quickly to the needs of students. And so, those are the things that we have in our school-based supports. The fourth area is the homeless and foster care section of our website. And here, this page, as you can see, it provides contact information and links to resources regarding student experiencing homelessness and students in foster care. And in our school district, like all other school districts, these are, these are alive and well in our school. Many students identified in these areas, and many, many students who need supports in these areas. Again, we are following the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services guidelines in these areas, and we work as much as we possibly can to ensure that all of our kids, regardless of background, homelessness, whatever type of care they may have at home, that we are engaging with them, and we are providing the best opportunities possible. So, I'm very happy to introduce our new website and the many pieces and parts to it, and the many opportunities for students, for parents, for individuals in our community. And I would encourage people to go through here and take a look. And I want to, want to thank the Board of Education and congratulate you on your work to ensure that this was taken care of in this school year as we move into the upcoming year. So, kudos to our board and all the individuals who have worked to make this website possible. And so, this last one is the Forest Hills 5K. That happened this past weekend. Given the fact that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, I've added this slide. This evening, I want you to notice, please, that the board members and administrators of the district, we are proudly wearing a Mental Health Awareness sticker that we have on our lapels. Additionally, we like to draw attention to the Forest Hills Foundation for Education and the nearly 2,700 people that participated in last Saturday's Forest Hills 5K. And that doesn't include the hundreds of volunteers, community and business partners, as well as other contributors that made the event such a success. And later tonight, Stacy Gallard, who is with us, the Executive Director of the Foundation, will talk to you about the fundraising component of that. And I was told not to say anything, because we want to unveil that later. It's a special moment. I think you're all going to love that. Earlier today, I spoke with Stacy to once again thank her for her leadership and for all members of the Foundation Executive Board and its many army of volunteers. Though 5K is a significant event, it is one of many that creates opportunities like after-school tutoring, mentorship programming, and wellness programming, things like scholarship and teacher grants, robotics, destination imagination, and much, much more that the foundation provides to assist us with our schools. If you've not done so, I encourage everyone to find out more about the foundation's work and to remember that every donation or in-kind service, big or small, adds value to the student experience, and to build capacity among our staff to provide the best possible programming available to students. I proudly wear my Month of May Wellness sticker tonight, and also appreciate all that the foundation contributes to the Forest Hills School District. I have one other comment. A lot of people in the room, and as a superintendent, I'll keep these comments brief. Simply stated, I want to thank the students of Turpin and Anderson High School for the way you peacefully conducted yourselves during today's student-led demonstration. Your actions served as a positive example to me of how our great system of democracy offers opportunity to share one's perspective, express ideas and opinions, and how to exercise one's constitutionally guaranteed right to assemble peaceably. I am inspired by your thoughtful, respectful approach, and I thank you, students, for the way that you handled today. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Moving on to public comment. Again, as a reminder, speakers are encouraged to state your name when you begin. Please direct all comments to the board chair and to not any specific board member, and not addressing specific employees, please. I asked you to be respectful during public comments, so no clapping, cheering, booing, or any other audience participation, please. Give respect to all speakers addressing the board. We have, I'm going to announce four up at a time. And if, when I mention your name, if you could step up and, and get in the line right over here by the podium, I'd appreciate it. Denise Mayer. John Wetingle, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing your name wrong. Fiona Fawcett. Casey Lu Pareto. Those are the first four. You may begin.
Good evening, school board members, Mr. Preble, staff, and parents. My name is Denise Mayer, and I'm the founder and director of Step Up Anderson Township. It's a coalition for a safe, healthy, and drug-free community. Last week, three amazing and intelligent young women at Ohio State took what they thought was Adderall as a study booster. Two are dead, and one was hospitalized. These were poisonings. These aren't overdoses. These kids did not think for one minute that they were going to become addicted. They just wanted to study. So, we as a community need to wake up to these dangers, as well as to those of vaping nicotine, using Dab pens with high-dose marijuana, as well as counterfeit pills. There is no time left to say it would never happen to my child, or my child is too busy with sports, band theater, et cetera, to get involved with this stuff. This is Mental Health Awareness Month, and there's an 83% crossover between drug use and mental health. What came first, the chicken or the egg? Did an undiagnosed mental illness cause a child to self-medicate, or did the child start experimenting and become addicted, psychotic, or in some cases schizophrenic? High potency marijuana begun in high school has been shown to contribute to the suicide. Prevention, sorry. I passed out some things.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, one second. All right. Today, myself and hundreds of my fellow students walked out of our classes in the hopes that you would listen. Now, I'm talking to you, hoping again that you will listen. Listen to us when we tell you that we want Diversity Day in our schools. We want a school board that cares about its students. The decision to cancel Diversity Day has robbed many of us of a great learning opportunity. I attended the event last year, and I can say that it was deeply engaging and educational. It exposed me to forms of diversity that are not common in our community. It was an experience I believe my fellow classmates deserve to have and clearly want to have, as demonstrated by their actions today.
You're good.
Those who were able to attend today's after-school event were lucky enough to get this experience, regardless of your decision. While these people have filled me with pride and joy by demonstrating their resolve to learn this content, it shouldn't have, it shouldn't have to be this way. By being forced to organize outside of school, many students were deprived of the opportunity to attend. Whether this was because of a lack of transportation or a lack of time, these students should have an in-school Diversity Day, and I sincerely hope that you will change your minds and allow them to have one next year. Your job is to help the students, and it's time you start doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. We could pause for a moment, please? Hello? I'd like to call up the next four speakers. Jen Ciolino. Louise Lavar. Wendy Strickler. And Lindy Di Maria. Please line up.
This is a speech by my classmate Claire Mangle. Hello, everyone. My name is Claire Mangle, and I am a senior at Turpin High School. I thought my last month of high school would be full of studying for AP exams or enjoying the last senior year events and hanging out with my friends. Instead, because four-fifths of the school board voted to cancel Diversity Day, my friends and I have spent hours coordinating a peaceful protest and extracurricular Diversity Day and talking to local media. In fact, I cannot be at this meeting tonight, because I am currently driving to Washington DC to testify to the House Subcommittee on Civil Rights and Civil Liberties. I'm going to tell the story of the students here as part of a hearing focused on how policies and actions like that of this board are disrupting education across the community. Dr. Resmussen, Ra, Resmussen has my written testimony, if any of you are interested in reading it. While I'm incredibly disappointed in this turn of events and angry that this is how I'm spending my last month of high school, I'm amazed by the incredible support I've seen for diversity. People in our national government support Diversity Day. The committee supports Diversity Day.
Thank you. The time's up. Thank you. Casey?
Hi, my name is Casey Lu Periello.
Hi, my name is Casey Lu Periello. I'm a senior at Turpin, and I've been a Diversity Day leader for two years now. It's nice to meet you all, but I do wish it was under different circumstances. To start off, I'd like to say that I know your job isn't easy. You have to make decisions, and with that comes with the reality that you can't please everyone. With that being said, I'd like to remind you who you're doing your job for, and hopefully your answer would be that you're doing this for us, the students. After all, we're the ones who are at school, at the schools you run, where there are seven hours a day, five days a week, for a great portion of the year. And for that, I ask you to listen. Not just here, but really, truly listen. Listen to what we have to say. Listen to what we want. Listen to what we need. You have a responsibility to do what is best for your students, and that comes with listening to us, whether you personally agree with what we need or not. We're tired of crying for help. We're tired of crying, asking for those who are supposed to care about us to just listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Ciolino. I'm here this evening as the parent of three children in Forest Hills Schools, a property owner and taxpayer in the school district, and as an executive-level technology leader at a global Fortune 50 company. I invested in this community because of the quality of the schools. Social, emotional, historical, and cultural learnings are wise investments in our children's and our country's future. Allowing our students to self-direct elements of this learning teaches them leadership skills and critical thinking. American competitiveness requires our board to uphold their responsibilities to our community by ensuring our students' education prepares them to compete in a global economy. Failure to do so erodes their future prospects, erodes the quality of the education this district offers, and will erode the economic strength of this community and this country. Those who would spin the narrative to assert that this type of learning is divisive are only exposing their own frailties. Cultural learning strengthens our unity. I encourage our board and our fear-based community members to embrace their own learning instead of using false pretenses.
Thank you, Jen. I appreciate it. Louise LeVar. Let's take a moment to call up the next four, please. We have Krista Wessels, Sean Martin, Karen Maryharfer, and Carrie Buckovich.
My name's Louise LeWari. Four current school board members campaigned, according to their website, primarily on anti-critical race theory this past fall, backed by a political party that has made it their practice to stir up fear of diversity and rejection of solid educational practices. The fear being ignited has interesting roots. During the Jim Crow era, thousands of black men were lynched for the alleged crime of dishonoring white women's innocence. But today, with interracial marriage legal and more common in this country, that charge would not incite the same fear and protest. So I believe the fear mongering has shifted its tune to the need to protect white children's innocence, to be more specific, white, straight, cisgender children. The excuse for canceling Diversity Day was that it was political and an indoctrination, but it was the school board who called it that, not the students. I believe these four school board members care much more about, care less about our students than they do about using their position to promote a political tool.
Thank you, Louise. Wendy?
Good evening. I'm Wendy Strickler. I'm here to speak about some of the false perceptions being spread in the community around canceling Diversity Day. And to be clear, requiring a movement to after-school with no teacher support in May is, for all intents and purposes, a cancellation. First, there is an argument that this is an expansion to more students. Please do not buy into the audacity of that argument. Students are busy. We all have commitments in May. The decision to move this at the last minute in May eliminated this opportunity for students who work, students who watch siblings, students who don't have mobility to and from school, students in clubs, students in sports. The idea that canceling a school event designed for school in May allowed for expansion is downright false. Number two, this was costing taxpayer money. Let's be clear, this place, this was in place for six years with an agenda, events, and plans. The speakers were free of charge. This costs significantly less than a trip to the zoo, a trip to the Anderson Town Center, or a leadership speaker coming in. That argument is blatantly false and a red herring. Finally, the argument that this is not educational. A quick look at the Ohio education standards finds reference to heritage and cultural bias, all of which needs addressed.
Good evening. I'm Lindy Di Maria. So the argument that this is not educational or school-appropriate is belied by a simple review of the Ohio Department of Education content standards required by law. Standards starting in kindergarten include, and through eighth grade include, that heritage is reflected through diverse cultures and is shown through arts, customs, traditions, family, color, and language. Recent research from the Donald and Charlie Sewell Foundation with MIT Sloan Management Review states that the number-one reason for the great resignation is toxic culture. Number one under toxic culture is a lack of inclusion and understanding of others, creating a toxic work environment in which people now refuse to work. Today, the students' vision created and put a powerful learning experience for themselves because adults in this community entrusted with their education let them down. In fact, four students walked all the way from Anderson High School to participate in the event today. I, as an educator myself, learned so much from what these amazing kids put together when I helped with the event this afternoon.
Thank you, Wendy. Krista?
Krista Wessels-Gusman. Our vision is to ensure all students' success, and in this, there is no us or them. It's not a political conversation. But due to recent board decisions, this vision seems to be in direct contrast to the board's goals and position. Self-awareness and empathy are two essential skills for success, which help navigate the us versus them, are learned and encouraged through diversity inclusion training, and they also happen to be the strongest indicators for future success and are tied to decreased bullying. I work in corporate America, have worked and traveled the globe, and the businesses of today are prioritizing diversity, inclusion, equity, and belonging. In our globalized world, you're not preparing our students. If we miss the opportunity to give our students a safe place to challenge and grow, to explore and to make mistakes here in their own home, we miss the opportunity to prepare them for the adult world. By removing Diversity Day and DNI in the curriculum, we don't stop the rest of the world from their continued focus on it. We just under-prepare our students. As a bi-ethnic community member, the daughter and wife of an immigrant, a member of a bilingual household, and the future parent of a child that's a minority in this school, I care.
Thank you very much. Sean Martin.
Sean Martin. I've come to this meeting tonight to request one thing. Do your jobs. Your job is not to take and take from students because they don't have the same ideas about diversity that you do. Your job is not to take away the choice of parent, the choice parents made to opt into this Diversity Day event. Do your jobs. Your job is to build these students up, not tear them down, not to force them into moments of adversity. Do your jobs. Instead of always taking, do your jobs and propose an operating levy. Students risk losing electives, and Katie even said all-day kindergarten is on the chopping block. My daughter has learned to read a full year and a half before I did, and it is all because of Ms. Bell's all-day kindergarten. Do your jobs. Maybe look into how terrible the district is at collecting kindergarten fees. I've heard FHSD is terrible at it. Maybe that can help pay for it. Do your jobs for everyone, not just who you agree with. Thank you.
Let's take a moment. I'm going to add a couple more names on here. Darcy Bean, Jonelle Wareman, Sarah Farran Camp, and Sarah Thudkamp.
I'm Karen Mayerhofer. I'm here to thank several groups. First, the For Forest Hills, who have woken up a community that was asleep at the wheel. We all know a majority of our voters failed to show up last November, and now they all understand what a huge mistake that was. Every event I've attended the last month has been dominated by conversations about our dysfunctional board, a board that has lost focus or maybe never had it. Instead, the consensus is that the board has become a platform for a political agenda. Your current priority should be funding our district. At this point in time, we have seen zero signs of addressing the subject. Instead, you have decided to focus on a problem that never existed. The For Forest Hills ran on a platform of giving a voice to all. Are you prepared to fulfill your pledge? Because up to this point, we haven't witnessed it. Bring us a levy. Let us vote yea or nay. Let the voters express their voices. I also want to thank all of you who showed up today.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it.
My name is Carrie Buckovich, and I have two children that have attended Turpin High School. One graduated in 2020 and lost his graduation to COVID. The other is a current senior at Turpin High School. I am here to plead to the school board to put the class of 2022 at the forefront of all your decisions for graduation. It's obvious that members of the school board have had the opportunity to voice their opinions and make decisions that have caused angst for many members of the district. As a result, protesting and individuals using their right to protest have become quite prevalent on both sides of the aisle. Graduation is not about politics. There will be many opportunities for both the school board, those supporting and those opposing, to argue, protest, and maybe even at some crazy time, sit down and have an open dialogue about these issues. But graduation should not be about, should be about the students and families that have earned their time on stage. Since it will be impossible to stop the protesting or potential deflection of what matters at graduation from the masses, I implore Linda Hosfeld and the school board members to consider not being present at graduation. I am aware it is a tradition to speak, and it is not in the bylaws. As such, it is a very simple, mature, and adult decision that will allow graduation to be back on the students.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Darcy Bean. I'm a parent here in Turpin Hills. I have a mechanical engineering degree and a Harvard MBA. I work with hundreds of organizations on strategy here in the area. All of them have a DEI strategy. It's not optional. I look at the board. Your main responsibility, I tell all my leaders, look up. Look around. It is not optional. You're not preparing our students for a global economy. It is not an option. I'm looking out at the parents and the students. You guys need some committees, some clubs, all these other high schools. Parents' equity and inclusion, it's a real thing. Parents across the culture, hands across the culture. It's not about one day. It's about multiple events throughout the entire year. Don't let them take one day. You guys have multiple events. I'm here to help you. You're going to lose teachers. You're going to lose good students, and you're going to lose your property values. So look up.
Thank you, Darcy.
Face the microphone and step back. Even better.
He's a fixer.
Actually, a little bit of distance, because when you say a P or whatever, that stops. It's just, yes. Okay. Hi, guys. I'm Jonelle Wareman. I am a Turpin parent. I want to welcome the school board, the new school board members, and now I want to remind you of some of the policies that you ran on. Number one, for the parent right to opt in. This is clearly the situation we find ourselves in for Diversity Day. You canceled the event with conflicting reasons, delay tactics, and lots of no comments. You did not respect the concept of opting in because you disliked the event for personal or political reasons. Number two, letting the teacher teach. In Turpin, 77% of the staff hold a master's degree, and they are the reasons why Turpin is one of the top schools in Ohio. Ask them questions. They have the knowledge and experience to answer anything you throw at them. Work together instead of forcing your will. They are professionals and have our students' best interests at heart. Number three, restore trust in the community. Help the situation by actually being transparent with your decisions. Listen and respond to the diverse ideas and needs of our community. Communicate honestly and with integrity. In no other way will restore the trust that the board is actually working for the improvement of our schools.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Farran Camp. I'm a mother of two students in Forest Hills, and I'm a global HR leader at a Fortune 50 company in town. Sometimes my global executives ask me, why do we have to do DEI? Can't we just run the business? In your case, you might say, can't we just teach our school? And I'll tell you what I tell them. DEI is running the business. The reason it's running the business is study after study and business case after business case has proven that diverse people and diverse thinking drives better results because it drives empathy for one another and a common understanding. It drives creativity and thinking by seeing lenses and different perspectives. It drives a sense of belonging for individuals to feel like they can show up in the workplace and show up in the school and bring themselves, and it develops better leaders. And so I implore you to consider reinstating the opt-in Diversity Day, to allow people to have the opportunity to be more empathetic, to be more creative, to be more better leaders in our community, and to give them that opportunity.
Thank you. Let's take a second here, and let's add a few more people. I have Erica Chizik, Ashley Hubner, Laura Dino, and Claire Wagner. Please step up. I think we're ready.
On the district website, there is a list of board duties. This is your job description. Highlights include recommending financing and funding options, adopting a budget that demonstrates fiscal accountability, adopting policies, and you're only to do this in public meetings. You are not meeting your responsibilities per your job description. You insert yourselves into areas that are not within your job description. You are creating practices instead of following proper procedures needed to adopt new policies. You have not been transparent, and you have not communicated your plans. We need to know what you are going to do in terms of a levy and cuts to the budget. You've discussed cuts like cutting full-day kindergarten and closing schools, but you've not seriously discussed your plans in any of these meetings. Parents need to know your plans. We need to know what you are going to do. If you are not going to talk about the budget, we need to know why, because that is a critical part of your job. We want strong schools and to maintain programs and services.
Thank you.
Erica Chizik. Ms. Hausfield says she does not want to divide the community. The literature that you used to get elected would give me a reason not to believe that. The incompetence that you've demonstrated the last six months has given me a reason not to believe that. And quite frankly, I believe that is so that you don't have to talk about hot-button issues that your voters voted for, and that's funding our schools. You know that we have to have more money to keep the district going. You know that as soon as you tell these people that you are going to raise their taxes or close a school, the community that put you in power will turn on you. So you're turning on our children and making Diversity Day a boogeyman. But now school's out, so what are you going to do? You have to start actually speaking about our finances and not just the pool. Do you all think it's weird that some of the members never talk in the outside of executive sessions? I do. People at home need to start asking these elected officials what the plan is to keep the schools top-ranked, to keep our property values up.
Thank you, Erica.
Hi, I'm Ashley Hubner. I'm a freshman at Anderson. On the Forest Hills website, the welcome message states, Forest Hills is a place where all members of the district are engaged in providing educational opportunities that empower students to excel. With the tradition of excellence and supportive community, Forest Hills School District provides an innovative curriculum, high expectations, and total devotion to young people. I believe that we have a supportive community that wants what is best for the students. But I am unsure about the school board providing us with the best educational options and being totally devoted to students. Diversity Day would help empower us to excel. Since Anderson Township is a predominantly white community, my fellow students and I need to learn about diversity. We need to be prepared for life after high school, and we need to be aware about other cultures. My future roommates or coworkers may be of a different social or ethnic background. I wish the board would think about me and other students when making large decisions, especially about what we are learning. I hope Diversity Day happens at both Anderson and Turpin next school year. Diversity, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Claire Wagner, and I'm sophomore class president at Anderson. I also have the pleasure of organizing the walkout on Anderson. I'll try to keep this short because this is not my, just my story to share. As a student body and a community, we have become happily oblivious to the power we hold in conversations of diversity. We have the power to step aside, and we have the power to amplify others' voices. We have the power to learn about experiences other than our own, and lastly, we have the power to make a change. This isn't just about the canceling of Diversity Day, but the racist and ethnocentric biases behind it. This is about the pure abuse of power our school board has committed. This is about how in the midst of a four-year-long mental health crisis within our district, our school board has done nothing to support their students in times of need. Instead, the school board puts their energy into canceling an annual event that has been happening for the past seven years. Diversity Day is a day to teach about cultures and stories other than our own. Diversity Day is a day to teach about cultures and stories other than our own. It's a way to teach our students to accept others' differences and varying opinions. Without Diversity Day, our students are being raised in a homogeneous society without knowledge or acceptance for others. No matter how hard you try.
Thank you. I'm going to call a few more names up here. Give me a second. Tina Mooney, Roger Green, Geneva Green, Hannah Smith, and April Roush. If you could please come up and line up, please? Okay.
Laura Dino. I am a mother of two small children that will be entering the school district this coming fall. I didn't actually vote for many of you on the board, but that's okay. I do agree and find many similarities with you as written in an October 2021 correspondence I received from some of the current board members that I hold in my hands right now. I read your individual letters, which in part resonated with me as a working mother. For example, you explained that you are comfortable listening, problem-solving, and leading diverse groups of people. I ask you, were you listening while students and parents protested the delay and cancellation of Diversity Day? You wrote, "Working for a global company has given me the opportunity to work with people from different countries and cultures and team environments." While bringing high ethical standards and global perspectives to the table, I ask you, are you preparing the students to work within a global company with the cancellation of this day? You pledged to be transparent in many decision-making, in any decision-making. Thank you.
My name is Hannah Smith, and I'm a junior at Turpin High School. I'm a third-generation immigrant, and my grandma was Taiwanese. Diversity Day is about starting a conversation. It is not political. Diversity Day is not only defined by race, but also sexual orientation and gender identities. Which is why I feel so, that the board members and opposing community members need to recognize the importance of Diversity Day at Turpin High School. By canceling Diversity Day, you have told minorities, and I especially as a minority, feel like you don't care about us. You are, do not have the consideration of Turpin High School students and should be ashamed that you were, since you were put on the board to help us and for us, you should be ashamed that-
You're good. You're good.
Forest Hills School Board, you have failed. You have failed your community.
Thank you. Is there Tina Mooney? I think we've gotten a little bit out of order, so if you could just say your name when you get up.
Tina Mooney. Okay. I'm a proud product of Forest Hills Schools. I loved my school years. My education here prepared me in so many ways to succeed. Academically, it prepared me to succeed in college and graduate school, and it prepared me to be a leader as well as a member of a community. What it did not prepare me for was to succeed in a diverse world, in a diverse workplace. You may believe that it's more important to notice similarities, but colleges and employers, they want people who understand and respect the differences. And unless we expose our students to those opportunities, they're not going to, they're going to walk out into the world just like I did, totally not prepared because we are such a homogeneous community. We have to go out of our way to make sure we prepare our students for those important aspects.
Thank you.
Geneva Green. I want to take this opportunity to speak to how this all makes me feel as a minority in this community. This comment isn't for those who are already sold on things like replacement theory or whatever. This is for people who are reasonable and just want a nice community that cares about others. I can't speak for every marginalized person, but when we, when I, when I live in a community where an optional opt-in event designed to promote conversations across racial and cultural bounds becomes controversial, people like me, specks in a sea of others, feel uncomfortable at best. Imagine living in a community that says, we don't want to understand your inner experiences. I can talk about what I know as a quantitative psychologist, a PhD in the measurement of human behavior with years of marketing experience. Companies that seek to understand their clients and their employees and their world and promote an action on what matters to those others are most successful. Don't we want to be a successful community? Discussing and understanding differences is not dirty or divisive.
Thank you very much.
My name is Roger Green. I'm the rector of St. Timothy's Episcopal Church and the proud parent of two kids who went to Mercer, Nagel, and Turpin. And I just simply want to implore you next year to make this event an event for everybody, to be behind it, to be supportive of it. It's optional. If parents aren't into this, they can opt out. But as we've heard from everybody before me, this is the kind of thing that our community needs to be doing, not only for our own community, but for the world. We need to be able to respect difference, love it, cherish it, and include everybody, no exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am April Roush. I am a parent, educator, and taxpayer. I've shared my opinions widely and specifically with board members. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the organization Showing Up for Racial Justice, which is a national organization supporting diversity in the entire world. Showing Up for Racial Justice Cincinnati has released a statement in support of our students today. "We are proud of student leaders who are centering a search for knowledge, empathy, and social justice. The curiosity and kindness of our youth is something that we celebrate. It is a beautiful thing when young people want to learn about experiences and people different from their own, join in community, and ask hard questions. We would like all those in Forest Hills School District to acknowledge the wonderful values that you've instilled in these students and work together with them in curiosity."
Thank you. We're going to move on to...
Is that the end of public comments?
That is the end of public comments.
Hannah Smith. Are you there? Stan. No, no, I mean Stan. Isn't that the right word? I'm telling you. Oh, I Stan. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to candidates for graduation. 9.1, Anderson and Turpin High School, class of 2022, presented by Scott Prebles.
Members of the board, in your packet you see the names of 588 students who represent the senior classes of Anderson High School and Turpin High School. Both high schools will use the CINTAS Center for Graduation Ceremonies on Saturday, May 28, 2022. Anderson High School students will graduate at 3:00 PM, and Turpin High School students will graduate at 6:30 PM. I recommend that the board approve the granting of diplomas to the candidates listed in the attachments provided this evening, and any students who enroll in Anderson or Turpin schools after this date, subject to the satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements as noted for graduation. And prior to your vote, I would like to congratulate all of those students whose names are listed in our agenda this evening. I think we need a recommendation, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the granting of diplomas to the candidates listed in the attachments, and any students who enroll in Anderson or Turpin schools after this date, subject to satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements as noted for graduation.
Second.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeldt?
Yes. Business Operations, 10.1, Sports Medicine Health Membership.
Let's applaud the graduates, yes.
Thank you. Tonight, in Business Operations, we just have one agenda item at 10.1, but it's a pretty significant agenda item. We have completed the RFP process for a new partnership with Health and Sports Medicine, and we are awarding that to the Christ Hospital, Ortho Cincinnati, and with this. Some key points in the agenda or in the RFP was, Christ Hospital will supply five full-time trainers, two at Anderson, two at Turpin, one at Nagle. We will also receive $150,000 annually to all three athletic departments. We will receive $50,000 annually to a facilities, athletic facilities upgrade, and they were also pledging $12,000 to the Forest Hills 5K annually for the term of this contract. The health partnership piece will also work with athletic training mentor programs, healthcare professional experiences, internships, externships, speaker series, and participation in career fairs. This is a large and very exciting thing for Forest Hills School District. At this time, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the Sports Medicine and Health Partnership with the Christ Hospital Network as part of the consent agenda.
John, I just wanted to thank you and your team for working so hard on that con, the agreement.
And thank you for saying that, because I do, I do need to point out, this was a team effort. We have members from Teaching and Learning and all the athletic directors that were involved in this process. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. We look forward to that partnership, John. Thank you. 11.1, Human Resources Report, Rob Fellows.
All right, good evening to the board and our guests. We have a number of items. It's May in a school district, and there's a lot going on in the Human Resources Department. The first item, Item A, is retirements, and we have four for board approval this evening. And I am not going to dwell too much on these, but I would be remiss if I didn't make a comment or two. The first one is an administrator in the district who happens to be in the room in the back, and he is an incredible individual. And when I think of the picture of the servant leader, Steve Trailer, comes to mind. Steve has been in the district for 22 years at Maddox Elementary, and he has been a stalwart principal through the years. He is beloved by many, and if there is a silver lining in this, it is that his approval of his retirement would be contingent upon his rehire, working in a position in central office where he'll be able to work alongside new teachers, new staff, in a coaching role alongside learning design specialists as part of our attempts to continue to recruit the best, retain the best, and really take advantage of Steve's knowledge institutionally as well as his incredible leadership academically. And so he is going to, he is asking me to stop talking, and, but if you please join me in thanking Steve for his time. Again, he's not going far, but this has been, it's been, I know it's an emotional roller coaster for him. We have three classified staff as well, and Terry Bolender, 10 years at Turpin and Mercer. Lynda Meyer is a paraprofessional who has been with us for 25 years. A lot of people know Lynda. She's phenomenal and works with some of our most at-risk students in the district and does so with an absolutely large heart and giving spirit. And Dwayne Stewart. Dwayne Stewart, 31 years in the district. He's been the head custodian at Anderson High School for a number of years, and he's the real deal. So we are going to miss all four of these individuals, and certainly the staffs at those particular buildings are lavishing celebrations upon them as they kind of gear up for their next phase in life. And so that's retirement. We have Item B, a number of resignations there for the board to consider this evening. Item C, leave as absence. There are two on the docket this evening. Item D are our employment items, the personnel items that encompass D through K. And a couple that I would like to just point out. The first would be on the administrative side. I'd like to, I'd like to welcome Zach McCormick back into our district as the athletic director here at Nagle Middle School. Zach was introduced pending board approval the other night at an awards evening, spring awards. He is a graduate of Turpin High School. He has served, he's worked in the business area, but then he served the last two years prior to this school year at Anderson High School as the assistant athletic director, and he's been this past year in West Claremont. We're excited to have him before the board for approval to replace John Vandermeer, who has resigned, and we're excited for him and his new journey at Deer Park. I'd also like to point out that just today, we were able to finalize, after a relatively extensive interview process, Jackie Reverman. Jackie has been the dean at White Oak Middle School. She has been at the middle school level for 15 years, and she is before the board for replacement here at Nagle Middle School as one of the assistant principal positions. She is coming to the district with a wealth of knowledge, experience in a number of areas that are going to really add to the experience of our Nagle students here in the building. Let's see, I'm going to jump over, we've got a lot of reappointment of personnel items, both on the certified side and the administrative side, several pages worth. And we'll get to Item I, special services appointment. You can see there, we've got a lot of stuff that goes on in the district even after the students leave, and so these are summer course of study type things, summer school teachers, Camp Kern, preparation for additional work there, and work beyond the contract for certain special education services that we provide throughout the summer. Item J is our coaches and counselors and a number of volunteers, and Item L as well. Let's see. There are two job descriptions for approval this evening, and as is our practice, anytime we have kind of an opening in the district, we always are looking at our job responsibilities, making sure that we're keeping them updated. So we have a school nurse revision to the job description there following Chris Wolfers resignation that has been approved prior, and the coordinator of teaching and learning position, which has been vacant for several years, and that has been revised to update some of the work that Steve will be doing in the district. And I would add that we have been working very closely with the Board of Education and are excited that this opportunity will come at no additional FTEs in the district. The last one would be an MOU for the OPEC 177 acknowledging for 11- and 12-month employees, the federal holiday for Juneteenth. This is something that was passed through both the House and the Senate in DC last year and was signed into law by Governor Dwyane just about two months ago. So that is in that report as well. Questions? For me?
No, but can I comment and say, Mr. Trailer, I was sad to see your name listed as resigning from the principal at Maddox. You're an amazing leader over there at Maddox, and you will be really missed. Happy that you're going to come back and mentor some new employees. But you're a great leader, and you will be missed at Maddox. So thank you for all the work.
Mr. Trailer, this is year 37 for me, and almost, I think, as many for you. And I want to tell you, when I think about an elementary principal, the qualities, the leadership, the commitment, the care for not only students but- leadership, the commitment, the care for not only students but for families and for staff, I see you. And I am thankful that I've had an opportunity to work alongside of you, and I appreciate your efforts, and I wish you the best in retirement. This district has had a great opportunity to take advantage of you sticking with us. So, thank you so much, Steve, and best wishes to you.
Can I say something about him, too, and just let the waterworks flow? My first kiddo started at Maddox, and when we were looking to buy a house in Anderson and were zoned to Maddox, Steve probably doesn't remember this, but I called him before I signed a contract on my house because I wanted to know that the principal was A-OK, the school was good, and I, in typical Leslie fashion, I asked a million questions, and he handled it with grace and just kindness and just a sensibility and understanding for like new parent kid going into school for the first time and all of that. And it was incredibly comforting, and I'm so heartbroken that we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to go home and tell Reagan, "Mr. Trailer's retiring." Maybe I won't tell her, and she'll just be surprised in the fall. But thank you seriously for everything you do and have done for all of these years. You will be sorely missed, but we'll, we'll see you in central office.
I would, I would just close by saying, we will begin our process for his successor here and hope to have that wrapped up within the next three to four weeks, for sure. We're eager to find, although big shoes to fill, the right person for that particular school and that Maddox community. And then, I just want to say one other thing, because, and I can't see him, but I think he's back there somewhere. Is Doug, Doug Baker back there?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so Doug was also on the agenda, and I, and I missed Doug. I'd just like to point out that school doesn't function without our custodial staff. Kids don't get to school without our transportation department, and we don't often see these folks, but they get the room set, they get everything organized. So, Doug also happens to be president of the OPEC 177 group, and he is the current head custodian at Sherwood. And we are excited, although sad for Sherwood, we're excited, and I know Dave Spencer sitting in the back is very excited, to have Doug stepping in after Mark's departure there. So, Doug kind of standing in the back is the symbol for like the 31 years of Dwayne Stewart and all the others, Terry, that, that do great work for kids that we don't always get to celebrate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Moving on to teaching and learning and curriculum, Kim Pence.
Good evening, and Steve, while you're still drying your eyes, as a bonus mother to Maddox Mustang, we appreciate you. And I've been holding that secret for a while. He is now going to be very angry with me later. I appreciate it. Student fees. Teaching and learning has one thing tonight. So, this was HR's Night to Shine. We have just our updated fee schedule for next year. Really, the only additional fees, it's something that we've already addressed, but it's a reminder to our community that we do, in grades K through 12, have a $75 device usage fee that we are looking at for next year. So, that is the significant increase. Other increases, it depends on the class. They were small, primarily based on inflation with the cost of a couple of books that students may use in a language arts classroom at the high school level. Otherwise, that's what we're looking at. So, the superintendent recommends the board approve the attached school fees for preschool through 12 for the 2022, 2023 school year.
13.0, Treasurer, Ms. Crawford?
Yeah, the first thing we have tonight is the five-year forecast. As you know, the Department of Education of Ohio requires school districts to submit a five-year forecast of our general operating fund of the school district. The first submission is due in November, and an update is due in May. So, if we could move the slide. So, what is a forecast, and how do we prepare it? A forecast is generally prepared by looking at past trends and revenues and expenditures, and accounting for all known activities and future predictions of what may happen. The important thing to remember that a forecast is not a roadmap of where we're going, but yet it's a planning tool to look at the revenues and expenditures we anticipate coming up. And it's a planning tool that must change and remain flexible as instructional plans change and as our revenues increase or decrease along the way. This year, as many years before us, it has brought many financial and instructional changes, and we continue to revise our forecast as we look for efficiencies and we learn of expenditure necessities. Do you want to change the next slide? Oh, sorry, I think we've got a slide two. Sorry, go back to the last one. We're still on that. This slide here, it has the challenges to forecasting. And there are many challenges to forecasting, and I present this slide every time I present the forecasts, just to remind us of the very many variables that we have limited or no control over. And those variables determine what our future revenues or expenditures will be. The first two challenges on here, the state revenues and property taxes, those are very material to the forecast. They alone comprise 97% of our revenues. In addition, one other challenge you see up there that hasn't been that problematic over the past several years has turned into a real problem the last couple of months, and that's inflation. Fuel prices alone have risen 9%. And given that we have 61 routes on the road every day, that's really been something that we've needed to rearrange some expenditures in our budget to be able to cover fuel costs. So, again, I'm not going to read all those to you. They're in, I give them to you every year, and you have it in board docs there. So, moving on to the next thing, and again, when we talk about the five-year forecast, I always like to put it in context of our overall budget. The five-year forecast only includes the general fund. So, it only includes the top fund that's highlighted up there. The general fund does account for 86% of our total budget. It is the only fund in the forecast. But I have highlighted Fund 507 up there. That is our ESSER funds, the COVID dollars that we have gotten. One of the things you could use COVID dollars for is continuity of services, and that's what we used it for. And I want to point out that overall, we have moved 2.4 million in expenditures from the general fund down to the ESSER fund in fiscal years '21 and '22, and in fiscal year '23, our year coming up, just starting on July 1st, we will have 1.8 million left to spend out of the ESSER funds. That will alleviate some of the burden on our general fund. So, as there is currently no more plans from the government to continue getting the COVID dollars, the expenditures that support the services that are currently being paid for out of 507, those expenditures must return to the forecast in, in the later years of the forecast. Moving on to the May forecast, which I say, which, as I said before, is an update to the November forecast, our cash balance has improved just slightly from the November forecast. Looking at this chart, the blue bar on the chart represents for the fiscal years listed along the horizontal axis, the revenues for those years. The red bar represents the expenditures for the fiscal years listed along the X-axis. The red bar, I'm sorry, the gray line, represents the cash balance from the November forecast, and the blue line represents the cash balance from the May forecast. As you can see, the cash balance line is slightly above where it was last November. And so, since it, our revenue outlook improved slightly, and our expenditures reduced a little, which is what caused the, a little bit more positive cash balance. One of the things to note when you look at this is that our cash balance will be in compliance with the district's cash balance policy through fiscal year '23. The district's cash balance policy says we will have a cash balance of 10% of our revenues. We will be in compliance with that through next year. So, through June 30, '23, we are in compliance, given this forecast. The district does fall a little short of meeting our cash reserve policy. Given the current trends in the forecast, we will fall short by 2.5 million in fiscal year '24. We will still have a positive cash balance of around 6.5 million, but we will fall short of having those reserves that, to be in compliance with our onboard policy. That is something that the board and the administration will need to address over the coming months. The next slide is going to talk a little bit about the changes in revenues and expenses in the forecast from November to May that, that caused the cash balance to be just a little bit higher. So, if we looked at our revenues, the revenues from November to May increased by about 1 and 1/4%, or in dollars, 1.1 million. The primary reason for the increase in revenues had to do, number one, with the fair school funding model. That's something that was, that was a new state funding model that was implemented just this school year. ODE is still working out how they are going to implement what the legislators passed. And as a matter of fact, we do not have a manual yet telling us how they went about calculating the formula for the district. So, we are still waiting on that. But as I say, they've implemented it, phased it in slowly over the years, and as we come to the last couple of months of our fiscal year, we know that we can increase our projections in what we're going to get from the state by around 458,000. Another reason behind the increase in revenues in the general fund are all-day kindergarten tuition increases. Over the last several years, we have been around 775,000 has been our average in the years in which we had all-day kindergarten. Of course, during the COVID year during 2021, we did not have all-day kindergarten. So, our first year back, we have increased our tuition to around 900, almost 975,000. So, that was unexpected, given, given past trends have been around in the 775,000 range. So, again, another reason, another something that came out of trends. Medicaid reimbursements were a little higher than expected. Medicaid reimbursements run, run a couple of years behind when the services is actually performed. Given that you submit your services to the Ohio Department of Jobs and Family Services for reimbursement, they look at the services that we provided. As I say, it runs a couple of years behind. We weren't sure if some of our remote services then from the COVID timeframe, number one, would be allowed, and number two, we did not offer as many services during that timeframe, down just a little bit. So, in the forecast, I had reduced our expected revenues from Medicaid by about 200,000. Really, we were only down about 130,000, so we were able to put a little over 70,000 back in the budget. So, that was the increases for the current year that we're in, fiscal year '22, which ends at the June, June 30, just coming up here. And those revenue increases are trended into the later years of the forecast, and we are expected to maintain those trends, and that is the assumptions that, that we listed for revenues. Looking at the changes for expenditures, expenditures for fiscal year '22 decreased by about 2% or just under 1.8 million. That's a, sounds a little higher than it actually is because the majority of that, 915,000, is really just due to timing. It's money that we thought would be spent this year, but on reflection and looking at our programs, it was moved into next year. A lot of that has to do maybe, an example is a textbook purchase. So, textbook purchases and instructional materials that were expected to be purchased this year have been moved into next year. So, timing difference, and that amount is moved into fiscal year '23 in the forecast. And just due to general budget efficiencies, as always, we asked our department and our building budgets to be judicious in their spending and return what they can to the general fund if it's not needed to, and they certainly answer the call. So, the rest of the expenditure decrease had to do with the cash efficiency efforts by our staff. Those, those things are carried forward into the '23 through '26 year. The other change that unfortunately had to be made, and in talking with the other treasurers throughout the state and the state experts on forecasting, they, what was suggested is to bump the inflationary rate to 5% for fiscal year '23. That's up from just around 1 to 2%. We had very low inflation in our five-year forecast. So, for fiscal year '23, we bumped the inflationary increase in our materials and supplies, purchase services, capital outlay, things like that were bumped up by 5%. We did lower that back down based, based upon the advice that we were given. So, inflationary rates from fiscal years '24 through the last year of the forecast ranged from 2 to 3%. In addition, thanks to working with Mr. Fellows and the Human Resource Department, he was able to find some staffing efficiencies, moving some people around. I know that there will be a slight loss of service in, in some areas, but I know that he's working hard to, to cover that. But anyhow, we took out 420,000 of staffing costs, beginning in fiscal year '23, and that is trended throughout the forecast. Keep in mind that those staffing reductions are added to the 750,000 that were taken out in fiscal year '21 remain out of the budget. So, that kind of in a nutshell is the changes between the November forecast and where we find ourselves now. And I don't know why this chart is missing one of the pipe. It's on the, the board doc one, but I'll just, I'll tell you what you have there then. This chart depicts, well, if, if the other one was up there, the chart depicts revenues from 2019 through 2022, and actually, it presents the breakdown of revenues between the years. And since the chart is not coming up, I will read it from my copy. I'm sure you'll see quite that far. But the one on the left in 2019, starting with state funding, 32% of our general budget came from the state. In this year, only 27%, so a drop of 5% coming from the state. What came from our taxpayers through property taxes, 51% in 2019, 56% in 2022. TIF arrangements with the township, which of course are actually property taxes that flow through the township and are given to the district through service payments, they were 13% of our budget in '19 and 14% of our budget in '22. So, the purpose is that unfortunately, state funding, while we are very pleased with the new model and getting more money than we would have gotten under the old model, it still falls way short of funding our schools in a district that the state considers to be wealthy. Moving on to the next slide to look at our expenditures, what do we spend our money on? Well, we're a service organization. The most important thing we do is teach kids, and you do that with personnel. So, of course, we spend, the majority of our budget is spent on salaries and benefits. We spend 84% of our We spend 84% of our budget, and that's pretty typical among school districts to spend 84 of their budget on salaries and benefits. That's down a little bit because if you remember what I said at the beginning of the presentation, there are salaries and the ESSR funds went to pay for some of the salary and benefits that would have been in the general fund, had it not been for the COVID dollars. The district spends 9% of its budget on purchase services, 3% on materials and supplies, excuse me, 1% on capital equipment, and 3% on debt service and just other miscellaneous. I have one last slide here, and I just, one of the things when I talk, I always like to point out that Forest Hills is a good return on the investment. And the other day when I was speaking, someone in the audience said, "Yeah, good bang for your buck." So I thought, "Oh, I like that. I'm going to add that to my slide." So however you want to look at it, our district's a good return on your investment and definitely a good bang for your buck. I'm very proud to say that the treasurer's staff works very hard, and every year, we are audited every year by the state of Ohio. And every year, we receive the state auditor's award of distinction. It's very important to us to exhibit good fiscal stewardship for the residents of this community that entrust us with their, with their money and more importantly, their kids. But also, in doing that, the district spends less per pupil than most school districts in Hamilton County. And while we spend less, our performance is higher. So we are fifth out of 23 Hamilton County school districts in terms of performance, as judged by the Ohio Report Card, and amongst the top 10% in the whole state. Our tax rate, our residential tax rate is lower than the Hamilton County average. And as we know, both of our high schools are in the top 4.4%, 4.4% in the state and the top 6.5% in the nation. So we have a lot to be proud of in here in Forest Hills. And the next couple of slides are just graphic, well, I've got the actual numbers, and you can find this on board docs. So this, this is the residential tax rates in Hamilton County. And if you look at those, you can see that Forest Hills, Forest Hills ranks 17th in the county out of 23 districts when it comes to residential tax rates. No one likes to pay taxes, including me, but I think that we are a good value here in Forest Hills. So one of the other things I want to mention, when people think property taxes, they always think they go to the schools, and they do. But many places get property taxes. And here in Anderson Township, 53.9% of your property taxes goes to the school. And I know that that must surprise some people, that 47, almost 47% of your taxes go somewhere else. But when people think property taxes, they only think of the schools. So property taxes do go to support others. And of course, we have two taxing districts. So for our Village of Newtown residents, 56.1% of their taxes go directly to the schools. And both of those are down as a percentage of the total taxes. Both of those are about down 1% since last year. And that's no surprise, given that there have been a couple of county levies passed since we've passed ours. So the percentage that, of your property taxes that comes to Forest Hills has decreased comparatively a little over the last year. Moving on to the next slide. And this is a slide that I just love, that I stole from the state report card, and it's not coming out real good on the screen. But if you can see Forest Hills, what this chart shows is along the bottom, you see how much the schools spend. And then on the vertical axis, you see the, you see what the performance is. So where you want to be is in the left-hand upper quadrant. And you will see that Forest Hills has the highest performance and spends less than anyone who has performance above them. And I think that maybe this is a graph we could get on the website and show, because I think this just points out what we're talking about, low cost, high quality, high performance. And again, the next slide, and this presentation's in board docs, just has the numbers that were, that were, that were on those scatter diagram. And the last slide just reminds us of the important return on investment. That said, I don't know if the board has any questions on the forecast, any comments, questions?
Matt, Mrs. Housefield, may I ask?
Sure.
I know it's bored, but may I ask?
Yes.
Alana, I heard you correctly saying that we've got a reduction of about 5% from the state of Ohio, even with the additional resources from the Fair School Funding Plan.
That was the percentage makeup of our budget in terms of keeping up with inflation. That would show that in 2019, the state of Ohio contributed 32% of our budget. In 2022, they only present, represent 27% of our budget. So it shows that the state has not kept up with inflation and not kept up with funding, funding our district.
So this is commentary, it's certainly not a question. As a superintendent of a school district that continues to receive less resources from the state of Ohio, that continues to make attritionary reductions in the last three years of nearly $1 million, taxpayers at the local level continue to have an increased burden from, based, based on what I'm hearing from this. These are essential things that are happening across the state of Ohio to school districts like Forest Hills. That's why it is imperative for the, for the Fair School Funding Plan to continue moving forward. And I know I'm only one superintendent of many across the state of Ohio, but the consistent reduction in percentages of dollars coming to school districts like this one is ludicrous. We continue to push more and more responsibility on our local voters. We continue to put boards of education like this one in very difficult situations, to have very difficult conversations about the very students that we serve and the programs that we provide. It is so disappointing to me after all of these years that we do not have a state funding model that does not include an inflationary component, so that we don't have to continue to have this unsettled conversation with our community across the state of Ohio in schools that are excellent, high-performing school districts with phenomenal parents, communities that support their schools. The burden continues to get worse and worse and worse. And it's commentary. I'm not suggesting that anyone has to answer that. It is my 17-year experience in school districts like this one. Your voice is important in this conversation. You must reach out to your senators, your elected officials, your congressmen to talk about this issue with them. Because this board of education, like many others, is faced with very difficult circumstances, very difficult circumstances. So I just want to make my comment on that. It's a very difficult job that we have, that the board has, that the community has. The resources continue to go away. And the common thought is that we're inefficient, that we don't know how to budget, that we don't understand the financial situation. Well, we continue to cut and cut and deny programs, and we're getting very close to another set or another series in this district, not because of our board, not because of our staff or our administration, because of a funding model that is not appropriate to educate students in the state of Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I very well said, Scott, thank you. Thank you for that.
And I wasn't trying to catch you off guard, Alana. I'm in support of your work, very much so. Thank you.
No, that was very eloquent. I appreciate it. It's, you know, it's hard to deliver such a sombering message when it's in finance. But when you balance that with the amazing things that our staff and students do, it's just pretty amazing. We've got something special here that we need to protect. So moving on to April's financials. Item 13.2 on your agenda. The first item, item A, presents a long list of donors, and we are very thankful for all of those, over 42,000 just this past month, thanks to all of those. Item B is the cash activity statement, which presents the expenditure and revenues in all board funds, not just the general fund or the five-year forecast fund. All of the funds are there. Item C presents the general fund that we just went over. It presents the general fund receipts by month and fiscal year to date ended April 30th. And April was a large cash flow month. We received a couple of large receipts that we only receive twice a year, and this was our second receipt of them. We received our second installment of the TIF revenues, 7.4 million. And we also received our second and final receipt from the state for homestead and rollback, and that was 2.8. So those were the primary receipts received during the month. And as we talked about in the five-year forecast, revenues are tracking a little higher than we had originally anticipated. Items D and E in your agenda present the expenditures in the general fund for the month and the fiscal year to date ended April 30th. So again, you hear me say this every month, expenditures are very stable. We can divide them by 12. So with 82% of our fiscal year complete at the end of April, we've spent just over 81% of our appropriations with another 3.3% set aside for encumbrances. So right where we expect we, we would be, and as you saw by the five-year forecast, a little less than we expected at this point in time. The bank reconciliations and investments are presented in agenda item F and G, and the appropriation adjustment detail is in item 13.2. I respectfully request that the board approve the treasurer's items as part of the consent agenda, items 10.1 through 13.2H. Thank you for your attention tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the action items 10.1 through 13.2 as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Housefeld?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Thank you, Alana. On to 14.0, board discussion. I have an update I'd like to provide you guys on the superintendent's search. So Scott, if you want to close your ears. We have been working with K-12, our business consultant, to assist us with this search, and they've been working very, very hard, putting in a lot of time and hours into it. They are a very longstanding company. They've, they've been doing searches for, since 2001. Our Forest Hills search was launched on May 6 with postings of the superintendent vacancy. The announcement has been posted on our district website, which you can go to this website and check it out. I don't know if we can put that up or not, but if we can't, that's okay. It was also posted on the Ohio School Boards Association. What they've done so far is conducted a series of 16 focus groups, which is really incredible that they're pulling these off. Most of them started this week, and I believe they are holding them up until tonight as well. So they're working very hard. The focus groups entail the students, staff, administrators, community leaders, and the community at large. So far, they've done 16 focus groups with 269 attendees. Let's see here. Currently, the focus groups includes a search profile criteria questionnaire, which has been sent out to, to the community, and it's available on the district website, if you haven't had a chance to finish it. We have 446 questionnaires returned. The deadline for submitting is Monday, May 23. Once we reach the deadline, K-12 will produce a superintendent's search profile, which will be made available to the public. And the Board of Education certainly appreciates the values and the interest engagement of everybody in the community. The application deadlines for, for that is due, the deadline is June 1st. And then the board will expect to begin screening candidates the week of June 6, with the interview week, June 13th and the 20th. So that's a quick update on the superintendent's search.
Alana, I'd just like to add, if anybody, you know, wants to know, I, I think it's great that the firm, the two gentlemen that are sort of leading the search have Forest Hills connections. One is a former, I believe, Wilson principal, and the other is a former Turpin principal. So just from my perspective, I find that comforting to know that they understand our district and, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there as a, as an added comment so people know, like, they are a great firm, yes, but they also have this connection to our district that I think is going to be helpful as we move forward.
There's only 446 respondents?
So far, yeah.
Are we just advertising it on the website, or is it anywhere else? Is it in the paper?
They are, I don't think, I don't believe it's in the paper. I think they're doing website and reaching out to community members. We submitted some name. The website will keep, keep you guys updated if you, if you want to check out the website. It'll be updated.
Yeah, the, the link for the superintendent's search information is right up top. I mean, you, you can't miss it.
I thought we would have more respondents than that.
Me too, by now, yeah. You said the deadline's Monday, is that correct?
Deadline is Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to thank Bob Buck and his team for a successful Camp Kern this year. Thank you so much for that. The kids had such a blast. I mean, and also, I wanted to make a note, you know, as we come to the close of another year, I just wanted to thank all of the teachers and the support staff for a great year. And, you know, we're thankful to have dedicated and compassionate leaders within Forest Hills. So thank you for all the teachers for this year.
Okay, we'll move on to the reports to the Board of Education. Item 15.1, Teaching and Learning Committee. Katie Stewart could not be here tonight. Her son is actually graduating, so she's doing all those festivities with the family. Sarah, did you have anything or? No comments?
No.
We'll, we'll move, Katie is the chair for that committee, so we'll just move it on to next month. 15.2, Technology and Facilities Committee.
We met, was it last Wednesday? Yeah, the last Wednesday. Whenever some of the stuff that we're going, the asphalt projects are on schedule for the summer, and then the nagle roof replacement is on schedule for the summer. Those are the two big things we got going on.
This is a silly question, entire roof?
No.
Or just part of it?
Back portions, the back portion.
The back portion, okay. Maybe it was a silly question then.
Okay, item 15.3, we have the Legislative Liaison Report. I've asked, Jody, did you happen to get that email that I sent you to put it up on the screen by any chance?
Oh, you didn't get it?
Okay. All right, I'll just roll through some of the legislative items that are, that are pending. House Bill 290, which is the backpack bill, which is House Bill 290, which is the backpack bill, which ensures that money flows kids to empower families and students to choose the school that best meets their need. It's referred to the House Finance Committee in January 2022. If you want information on the House Backpack Bill, can be found on the backpackbill.com website. House Bill 436, it's a dyslexia bill, which requires school districts and other public schools to administer annual dyslexia screenings beginning in the 22, 23 school year. It was signed into law in January 2021. We have House Bill 497, it's a third grade reading. Students will not be retained for not meeting third grade guarantee proficiencies. However, all interventions in summer and during the fourth grade year must be made available. This bill is pending in the House Committee since December 2021. House Bill 529, teacher transparency, required public and non-public schools and public colleges participating in the College Credit Plus program. That's the College Credit Plus program. The plus is a big deal because we do have college credit. So this is in the College Credit Plus program to post course curricula and other related information online. This is pending in the House Committee since January 2022. House Bill 554, teacher license flexibility. If a person is retired and their license has lapsed, they can get it renewed for a period of two years. House Bill 583, this is substitute teacher expansion, which allows districts to engage in two-year contracts rather than just one year. House Bill 606, which is a seizure-safe school, requires school nurses to develop a building plan for each student that is vulnerable to seizures. This is pending in Committee Primary and Secondary Education Review in March of this year. And lastly, the House Bill 616, which is Critical Race, prohibits public schools and non-public schools from teaching or providing training that promotes or endorses divisive or inherent racist concepts. This is referred to the State and Local Government Committee just this year, May 2022. That's what's going on up at the House. Let's move on to 15.4, which is Forest Hills Foundation.
I am so excited to hear.
Hi, Stacy.
Hi, Linda, and the rest of the school board. Good evening. My name is Stacy Gillard. I'm the Executive Director of the Forest Hills Foundation. We're going to kick off the report tonight, thanks to Adam and Jody. This is hot off the press, a video that we just actually put together today, thanks to Dave Kalinick for doing that for us. So check out what it looks like when the community comes together for the kids. I want to thank Leslie for being one of those. And that meant that people were out there really recruiting their network, their friends, their family, to support our kids and their mental health and wellness. And then lastly, we had over two hundred and twenty-five volunteers. So there were a lot of people it took to get, pull an event off like that. And so I'm proud to report it said in the video. But I can share publicly that this year's 2022 Forest Hills 5K raised a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the kids at Forest Hills. Hey, Jody, it's okay. One four zero, comma, zero zero zero. So there's a couple of things that stand out to me, and listening to all the commentary tonight, listening to our students, many parents, is that I want the students to know that we do hear you, and we understand that you are asking for help when it comes to mental health and wellness. So two things that stood out to me, one, our community rallied because it was around the mental health and well-being of our kids. I can't tell you how many businesses were like, we're going to give you more money, we want to do more, we want to be a higher-level sponsor because of our commitment to mental health and wellness for our kids. And the second thing is, is that it's about, this, I felt on Saturday, it was more than just an event in our community. It was about everybody coming together, having fun, getting resources around mental health, connecting with students and staff and a lot of people when it comes to supporting our kids. And so the Forest Hills Foundation will continue to look at ways. We've had a lot of growth this year, which is awesome, and we will continue to find ways that we can continue to impact Forest Hills students. And lastly, I would be remiss if I did not thank also our team of seven, a mighty team of seven, that worked on this for the last six to nine months. And that was Amy Heis and Sarah Flora, who were the co-chairs this year, Megan Woof. See, I'm trying to like talk away, right? Megan Woof, Lauren Tischler, Jamie Hollerin, and Nicole Whiting. And so those women really stepped up and allowed us to have such a successful event. So on behalf of the foundation, just thank you, thank you, thank you. I love seeing how our community comes together. It happened this weekend, and we look forward to continuing to do more great work for the kids. Thank you.
Amy Heis, Amy Heis. Amy, Amy, question. Where does Forrest get his clothes? Because he always has the best outfits. And Rob, matching? Y'all, oh, and Bob. I didn't, I didn't see Bob. You weren't there when I went by, but oh. Y'all were the best hype men ever.
Well, you did not see me in those costumes.
I saw you jogging. I saw you jogging. It was so much fun, and there were so many people there and students, and it was just really, really cool. So thank you to the foundation and to, you know, Rob and Bob and Forrest for not humiliating themselves, but being the wonderful clowns we've all grown to love and adore. No, y'all, y'all really were amazing, and so, thank you.
Stacy, Stacy, I have a, I have a quick question for Stacy. When was the first run? What year was it? Do you remember?
13.
Thirteen, oh. Okay, so it was.
So the foundation was created in 2008.
Right.
So the first run was in 2009, but it was independent. We just had some parent volunteers that got together, and then eventually it fell within the umbrella of the foundation. So the other thing, too, I wanted to say is this year as well, we raised four times the amount of money that has ever been brought in from the Forest Hills 5K. So thanks again for everybody's support.
Yeah. Item 16.0, Executive Session. Ooh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. 15.5, that would be the Teachers Association Report, Donna Lover.
I do not have a hundred and forty thousand dollars to give tonight, so I hope it wasn't any indication that I was missed. Without that, I want to make sure I start the evening, I know Stacy's still here, and following that tonight, I was just like, I knew you were going to announce that. So on behalf of the teachers, I know I sent a nice thank you, but thank you to our students, from our students, with our students, with our families and community, being part of that over the years. It's really outstanding to see great success. So good evening to the board, Mrs. Cropper and Superintendent Scott Prebles. What amazing month of May. Sometimes May, we look at things that are kind of wrapping up, and in some ways, I say it's gearing up. This month has been so full of great things, from watching our students as they're preparing to graduate, watching our students lead, watching our teachers celebrate our students, watching our parents and our community come together for the great things with mental health this month. As well as just looking at, I always state about graduation. May is always the month of graduation. It's the month of that. But it takes all of us, every single one of us, to get that student that's graduating to that spot. And I always want to make sure that I know a lot of our students are in here tonight. I know a lot of you send thank you notes, and you appear back to your elementaries. But as to the board, to remind us that it's really a culminating experience here in Forest Hills. As the proud president of the 500 teachers of Forest Hills School District, I truly want to emphasize the mission of FHTA, which is to advance the role of teaching and learning and practices for all staff, inclusive to all students. We want to build and enrich the diverse caring staff that we have to help our diverse, growing community. Tonight, I'll address three topics. FHTA and OEA updates legal as well. Two, the district celebrations, and then three, transitions. Just like you, Ms. Hosfeld, we also participate heavily in legal formats within the association. It's required of FHTA to work collectively with the Ohio Education Association, and every year, there are two, what we call Spring RAs, where our representative assembly, where over usually about, pretty close to about eight thousand teachers throughout Ohio attend. This year, our delegate, Chris Preston, attended on May 7th, and FHTA is proudly to present, we've been there every year for the last thirty years, we've had a teacher present and be possible at those RAs, which is an opportunity for us to understand and hear. You mentioned many tonight, and I won't mention them all, but collectively looking at all the legal things. And what happens with that is it's really important for us as teachers and educators in our profession to be aware of changes that are occurring. We also had the opportunity to reelect Scott DiMaro, who here in Forest Hills, we've had the opportunity to come and speak, and I'd highly encourage for him to come again and show the collective and collaborative atmosphere that presents itself here in Forest Hills. And then also, we are celebrating in Ohio the new Ohio State Superintendent Steve Dakin. And that opportunity, we've also asked Steve to come here and be part of our school community. It's really important to establish those kinds of things. It helps, just like the work that Scott's doing with the financial aspects, it helps for our school district to help get its name at the state level and to help us as teachers to advance teaching and learning. This month, the association also hosted in-person, which we're very, very excited of, and so were the teachers, our General Assembly, where we were able to pass our emergency COVID MOU, and we also made changes to our own constitution and bylaws. And in that respect, so that the board understands, we have, we'll host five executive team members next year. And we also passed to limit some of our terms, including our president. Our president will now serve an eight-year total max ability. And I will say this very nicely, no one should have to do that job for so many years. It's a great opportunity, but it does have a lot of work with it. Second is celebrations. Just as I mentioned earlier with graduation, I also noted this month, as well as the 5K, but I also want to make sure that we celebrate all of our retirees. We were able to celebrate, I believe, Rob maybe helped me here, I believe there were twelve total teacher retirees. When you put those numbers up and you start talking about who those people are, and you listen to what they've done, and I always call it the work of work, coming to work every day and being there with students and closing the door or being present with your kids, and I say our kids, because Kathy said it right in front of me, you become our kids. And that day is very important. It's not about awards or trophies and all those different things, really for students. It's about having caring adults who care about them. And that relationship building is essential to a great school. Also, with that, this month, we've also seen our students excelling in sports. We see them excel in the arts. I know this next couple of weeks here, there's still students competing. I see students doing crazy academic things. The young lady this evening, that we were able to celebrate with that scholarship to help her achieve is just absolutely phenomenal. It also comes with this. There are eight hundred Forest Hills School District employees that stand behind those students. And as teachers, we are very proud of each and every one of you. Also, I want to make sure if there's parents here tonight, as a teacher leader, I am only as good as you allow me to be, and thank you for sharing your children with us as teachers here in four schools. Thirdly will be transitions. A lot of change is occurring, and as you mentioned tonight, we are in the search for our new superintendent. As president, I've had the pleasure of working with, directly with, five of them. They're all very, I don't know, I must be really young. But I want to make sure tonight that I take a few moments to make sure from the association that I know as school is ending and the teachers are going to be going off and, you know, relaxing, enjoying their summer, I hope, and rejuvenating for next year, that we want to take time to talk about Scott Prebles. It is a complete honor to have great educators with us in our school district. I've worked with all of them, and I'm proud to say that all of us have had great relationships. The association works directly with the superintendent, and as president, I've always made it my effort and opportunity to make sure I establish a quality relationship on a professional level with our superintendent. That helps us as a board and as an association work collectively for the well-being of our staff, our students, and our school community, and more importantly, our students. Scott has served us in that capacity. He is an extreme professional. When Bay Village called and asked about Scott and tracked me down, I said, Scott who? I pretended I didn't know who they were talking about. Having a quality superintendent and having that opportunity to work with somebody like that is a real privilege from the teachers, and having someone who understands educators and someone who understands student, school, finance, I mean, the list is very, very difficult. Everyone is replaceable, all of us, but some people have special abilities, and Bay Village is very fortunate to get you, Scott. And we're very fortunate that you've been here with us for these years. Good, bad, and ugly, and strong and hard, we also recommend and understand as the teachers that the work that you've done at the state level for financials, for our schools, for all the schools in Ohio are, just like you talked about earlier, it's a very difficult challenge, and you really put yourself up for that. That, I can't thank you for enough, and I can't thank you enough for your friendship and also helping me work with boards and helping us get through goods and bad situations. We have a little something for you. I know you're not going to like this, so here it is. And it's become, as I can tell you many times, Scott has said something to me, and I say, yes, whatever. In your actions, and you guys know I'm a history teacher at heart, if your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader. That's from John Adams. Thank you for the years of collaboration with the Forest Hills Teachers Association, supporting students and our school community. Our sincere gratitude and appreciation for creating excellence in public education. It has nothing to do with contracts, Scott. It has to do with relationships. This is on behalf of myself, Vice President Mike Roberts from Air Elementary, Ben Scholes, our treasurer at Turpin, Brooke Lovely, our membership chair, Chris Preston, our delegate at Nagel, Gail Garza, our secretary from Turpin, and Courtney Yusuf, our communication chair. It's also from all of our 500 teachers and all of our students. It takes all of us. And I want to make sure I tell you tonight, on behalf of the teachers in Forest Hills School District, thank you so much for your time and dedication. Thank you. Thank you.
It's obvious that Donna talked with my mother earlier today. Thank you, Donna, and I thank all of the teachers and the great relationship we've had. It has been an honor to work with this teaching staff and this administrative staff. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for these students.
So with that transition, there will also be the transition of the association. This evening, I had the opportunity, as you spoke about the superintendent search, and I know I'm going a little bit long, as it is May, and I will hustle along here. I've attended several of the committees and listened, and listening is our most important skill as a leader, and I take that pretty seriously. The one thing that I really did hear over and over again, they ask the three questions. What makes a great school? What are the challenges? And what do you want in a superintendent? The first one, there was no doubt whatsoever that our schools have provided outstanding quality education to our students. The parents and the people I heard speaking talked nothing about anything except how great their kids have loved being here. That's a wonderful thing to hear, and that's something you cannot buy. That's something that's earned by professionals. The challenges were about being divided. And really, when you talk about great kids and great schools, the divide needs to stop, and that will help us all grow together. The third one is about replacing a superintendent. What are the qualities that you need there? For me, above and beyond, whether you want to hear it or not, is someone who understands kids. I always say, we talk about this sometimes, is, you know, we're in the kid business. That's what we do. That's what we're here to. All the other things that we all go to school and college for, and all the things that we have degrees in, those are things that are extra, but you've got to make sure down deep, that people that are working with our students, our staff, our teachers, are people that really are here for the right reasons, and that's for kids, and that's really key. This summer, I will be transitioning, taking a leave, and I will be bringing in my new set of leaders, my president. We're going to have a vice secretary that's also like a vice president. We're going to transition our delegate into all of our roles, and we will be combining a couple of items there. After eighteen years of serving as a president for the Forest Hills Teachers Association, I will take that opportunity in August to change that role. And what I want to leave for you as a Board is welcome those people, embrace that work, make them part of your work ethic, make them part of your day, because they do great things for our community. They're always here, they're always willing to work together. It's not about contracts, it's about relationships. With that, congratulations to our graduates, and thank you for a great school year.
I move that we go into Executive Session for the purpose of to consult with legal counsel regarding student educational progress and placement, Ohio Revised Code R C one two one point two-two G three, and to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal or state law regarding student educational progress and placement, Ohio Revised Code R C one two one point two-two G five.
Thank you. We will not be voting on anything this evening, so I'm going to, I'll mention the next regular Board meeting is June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.